Hi, everybody. Welcome. I'm not nearly as cute, brave, or musical as Rachel is, but I am Sarah Peake. I'm your state representative, and it is my honor and pleasure to have you here with me. And you standing to my left...
I am State Senator Julian Steer. A very proud graduate of the University of Michigan Middle School. Actually, in the back in the music room, we found some evidence from 2000 and 1999, 2000, when I was in the orchestra of the Virgin Cape. So you can check that out later. I'm thrilled to be onstage with my good friend and partner in crime, Sarah Peake.
Right. And we'll tell you about that photo. Julian is far more handsome today than he was in the eighth grade.
Yeah, I don't want to go back there.
And I'm sure his violin playing was great, but he is doing more for us and representing the people of Cape Cod and the islands in such a big and robust way. I am so thrilled to have him as my partner in government, and I know that working together, we're going to continue, not just to begin, because we've begun already, but to continue to get lots of great stuff done. But tonight is such a special night, because normally do we have our wonderful congressman with us, but we are also honored to have Senator Ed Markey with us here as well. I was sort of joking with some people, saying, "Well, you got a two for tonight."
So first Sarah and I, real quick, and then Congressman Keating and Senator Markey. And both Senator Markey and Congressman Keating have really spent so much of their lives as fighters for public good. Law actually started off much younger than even me in this. And really, both of them, who cut their teeth initially on Beacon Hill and quickly rose from there, really spent so much of their time fighting for working families from the communities that they grew up in and have taken that all the way to Washington, DC. I certainly don't envy the job that they have right now, the collegial environment that I think we get to enjoy. On Beacon Hill, working towards progress, it's a little bit different in Washington, DC. But we're really fortunate to have both Congressman Keating and Senator Markey leading our delegation here on the Cape. And I'm really thrilled that they're here in Orleans, in the Lower Cape, a part of this region that I think we both love and maybe have a little bias towards, at least for me, in representing the Cape and Islands.
And I cannot emphasize enough, given all that is going on in Washington, how special this is. Congressman Keating, we are blessed to have him represent us, and not to take anything for granted, but we see quite a bit of him. But for a sitting United States senator to hold a town hall meeting, I think that that is maybe unprecedented and unheard of. But that speaks to the type of man and who Senator Markey is, that he worked so collaboratively with the House delegation, speaks volumes of Congressman Keating and who he is. And I know, even though Julian and I, you give a politician a microphone, and we could go on and on all night long, you're not here to see and hear from us. That opportunity will come at a future date. So without further ado, we would like to introduce our congressman and our senator to come share a few brief remarks, and then there'll be an opportunity for Q and A from the audience as well. So thank you all for being here on this foggy evening. The year is precious.
Thank you all, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming out here. So I know that you're all suffering from PTSD, post-Trump stress disorder. And every day, there is something that is going on that deals with an issue that is of great concern to you. So when I look at where we are today, I say to myself, "Where should I go?" And I go back to 2013, when Sarah invited me down here to Orleans. And I said, "Well, what did I remember the most about going to Orleans?" And it was this incredibly high cholesterol count that I ran up at the chocolate bar. So I got down here an hour and a half ago to engage in unbelievably healthy behavior. But, you know, my wife is a public health doctor, and what she says is, "The higher the cholesterol count, the more people enjoy events." Okay? So that's where I've been since the moment I arrived back down here in Orleans. And we thank you all for coming out here tonight. Sarah and Julian are the best. Okay, that's all I can say. They are... We're so fortunate to have them representing us in the Massachusetts State Legislature at this time in our history. These are huge, huge debates which we are having in our country, and Massachusetts absolutely has to be the leader. And that's who Sarah and Julian are. They're leaders. They're people who are going to be there, fighting every single day, giving the voice to you, because that's all we really have, is the embodiment of all the people who are here in this room. And I just thank you so much, Julian. Thank you, Sarah, for everything that you do. And so Bill Keating and I, Billy and I, we're in Washington during this historic period of time. And we kind of get sent down there. I mean, my wife is a public health doctor, and Tevis is here with Bill. And, you know, we kind of get... Well, right now, we're on a work release program to come here, because the work is in Washington, fighting these incredible policies which we are confronted with. The budget proposals of Donald Trump tell the tale. How can you possibly cut the Environmental Protection Agency by 31%? When we know that, God forbid, the grace of God, Hurricane Sandy, if it had just moved a few degrees, would have completely and totally devastated the Cape. Would have made it non-recognizable. To cut the EPA budget by 31%, to say that climate science is not accurate, to appoint the Attorney General of Oklahoma as the head of the EPA, a person who sued the EPA 19 times as Attorney General on clean air, on clean water, on smog, on mercury, on every one of the issues that are concerned, will do nothing more than turn EPA into every polluter's ally. And we have to fight that, because we understand down here the critical protection of the environment is. The President wants to cut the State Department budget by 30% while increasing the Defense budget by $54 billion. Even the generals are saying, "We need more diplomats to make sure we don't have to use the bombs." "We need more people talking to the Russians, more people talking to the Russians, more people talking to Syria." So it's such an upside-down world, where the President thinks that shooting 59 rockets towards Syria or Mother of all bombs in Afghanistan is an actual strategy. It's not a strategy. It's a tactic, waiting for some strategy to be announced by the President, by his State Department, about what it is that we're going to try to do to negotiate an end to these conflicts. We're not going to have a military resolution of our conflict with North Korea that can end in anything other than a complete and total catastrophe for South Korea and other parts of this planet. There is no other solution other than negotiating. There is no way that we can deal with the issue of Syria unless we say to the Russians that we are going to tighten sanctions on your export of weapons company so tight that they will no longer be an operational company, because that's where they make their money, Rosso Baron export. Everyone that's selling weapons out of Russia has to go through one company. And so we have to put sanctions on all of those other companies. And then say to the Russians, "One, let's make sure that that ceasefire that you allegedly negotiated with Iran and Turkey and Russia in Syria gets implemented. Let's make sure that humanitarian aid can go to all parts of Syria. Let's ensure that we are using all of our diplomatic powers, using those economic sanctions as a way of trying to find a resolution, because there is no military resolution of the conflict in Syria. It just is impossible. We have to work through diplomacy in order to accomplish these goals." When it comes to the Affordable Care Act, the Affordable Care Act provides health care right now for 26 million additional people in our country. There was a movie out last year, "Heroin Cape Cod." Well, if the Affordable Care Act got repealed, it would take away coverage for addiction treatment from 2.8 million Americans. Now, how disastrous would that be if all of a sudden 2.8 million people lost their ability to get the treatment for this addiction problem, which is already an epidemic? That's just one small example of all of the things that would be affected negatively if the Affordable Care Act was repealed. And then we can continue to go down the list, but there are 19 agencies which Trump abolishes. And we just heard Rachel sing the "Stasmano Van," wasn't she great? Well, inside of Trump's budget, he completely eliminates the National Endowment for the Arts and the National Endowment for the Humanities, gone as federal agencies. Do we need more or less? Do we need more Rachels for our encourage or fewer Rachels? So this whole era is the world tipped upside-down on its head, and it goes from day to day as an adventure in terms of where the President is, where his administration is, and where his healthcare carriers are. Okay? Where are they? What is the policy? And so what we have to do is to, you know, is to fight every single day. And that's what I promise you I am going to do down there. And I came down here because I wanted to hear from you. And Bill said that this would be the best place to come to and that we could come together and do this together as a two-for-one special in Orleans. And so it is my great privilege to introduce to you my partner, the great congressman on the state of Massachusetts, Billy Keating. Right now, have a seat right there. The reason I said that is because when I first got to know Senator Markey, he was a member of Massachusetts Legislature, as Sarah is and as Julian, you know, both of you. He was coming... Leaving the Legislature, I was coming in. But we both were very active, it was called the Democratic Study Group, on progressive issues back then in Massachusetts. And we had a chance to get to know each other during that transition. And if you remember back to his campaign, those of you from that area remember that, his campaign slogan after he was tossed out of his office for standing up for issues in the Judiciary Committee, very important issues, and they put his desk out in the hallway. He had an ad that said, "You can tell me where to sit, but they can't tell me where to stand." Do you remember that? So we had the opportunity to know each other then through the years, but as we both served together in the House, we had that opportunity as well. And now, in working together across institutions, we have the opportunity to work in the Senate and the House together. It is so terrific to have someone that you could pick up the phone, that you shared so many issues with in the past and continue to do in the future. You know, I would say this, probably with the two of us in our whole careers, it's probably not a more important time, I don't think, that our country is facing than right now. Because our institutions, our core institutions, are under siege and under attack by our own leadership in our country. And that's what makes it more of a really daunting task and more of a serious issue. Think about it. What makes us different as we go to other countries and try and remain a beacon for the world on basic democratic issues? We always talk about the importance of the freedom of the press. Yet we now have a leader who is saying that, you know, "The press is the enemy, and it's a fake press." And I know that's politics, but it's still being said by our commander-in-chief. And when we go to other countries and try and move forward, you know, move forward globally in this world for our core beliefs to make the world safer and more prosperous, we're confronted with that. When we talk about freedom of religion, a basic core value, we have difficulty talking about that when there's executive orders that set aside, according to our own judiciary, to one particular faith and excluding them, which is not legal in our country as well, but which is under attack. So you could go through the freedom to vote and have a democratic election and to call that into question. And maybe the administration can deal with talking to the Russians. They probably can't deal with it as frequently as well as they did during the campaign. But hopefully, they can do that now a little more effectively as well. So our core beliefs, freedom of religion, freedom of press, civil, basic civil rights, and an independent rule of law and judiciary, among others, all under question, all under siege, and that's why you're here. And I've got to tell you how appreciative we are and the people we serve with are to see this activism come forward. Because the things, even though the levers of government are all on the same side right now, one thing sets us apart, and that's the activism of the people here in this country and here in this community. Turkey, or Syria, or Egypt, and certainly Russia. If you met like this in those countries, most of you would end up in jail. And that's what makes our country different. And the biggest threat we have to democracy in this world and within this country is indifference. And what I'm seeing around this country makes me so proud. What I'm seeing here in this district makes me so proud. And it's so important to us, because you are the platform. If we don't have a platform to work with within the institutions, you're the platform that gives us the opportunity to work outside the institution, to try and shape things. So I appreciate that a great deal. I want to hear, Ed wants to hear, from all of you on important issues. He laid out so many of the important issues. I know that we'll address health care, foreign policy, our environment, what's going on in terms of having confidence in our government and rule of law. All those things are critical issues. So welcome, thank you, and we'll begin to take any questions that people have.
Hello, Senator Markey, Representative Keating. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Fran Stolfield. I'm a resident of Rooster. I'm here as a member of Lower Cape Indivisible and a poster child for PTSD. We're reeling on a daily basis with the news. And we've assembled, many of us are here tonight. My questions to the both of you are, there's so much energy and so much will to support you or our representatives. What are the three most important things that you think we can do as activists? And that's the silver lining of this whole debacle that so many people have come together.
Fran, thank you personally. I'm enjoying other people here, the leaders of a lot of those groups that we met in Valmont and discussed many of these issues. But among the things that I think would be so important, and I'm seeing it here on Cape Cod, I'm seeing making sure you're heard. Tonight, you're making sure you're seen. What's really critical is making sure you're heard with the message. Those things I mentioned about the challenges we face, one of the things I left out is the fragmentation of the press. It's so vital that we have a free press here, but that press is fragmented more than it ever has before. For instance, the cable stations all have sponsors. And the sponsors are there to advertise, they're for-profit, and they're trying to appeal to a certain demographic that listens to that. It's one of the reasons we get so many different stories. If you turn on MSNBC, you get one news story. And you can turn on Fox and get another. We'll see how Fox is doing. It hit a good week, I think. But I see in letters to the editor, and maybe not as much calls, Fran getting the message out and not accepting things that aren't true. Because I saw letters just this week, some of the letters to the editor, and they're just not factually true. And we can't let the fact that... Look, if... No one has to agree with any of us. However, let's deal with the facts. And what we're really confronted by and have been recently, particularly on the health care issue, among other issues, but particularly with health care, is not dealing with the facts. And so addressing that is number one. Whether it's letter to the editor, whether it's talking in your communities or community groups, or even socially just saying, "By the way, we can disagree, but here are the facts." We will win, you know, many of the issues we're concerned with in terms of keeping our health care, keeping a place in the world, keeping us secure, advancing our economy forward, all things that we would love to work with the administration. And I'll say it, whether it's popular or not, we would like to work with the administration. We would like to get things done. We're not naysayers. And the two of us, as well as many of the people we serve with, and here's the second point, it's our obligation not just to say no to everything the way that things have been done over the last few years, but to bring forward solutions ourselves and bring them to the people and see if we can get a coalition around those. We need to fix some of the things with the Affordable Care Act. We're willing to do that and work across the aisle. The other thing we can do is... It's a good crowd for doing it. It's a demanding crowd. Demand of the people who represent you, not just no, no, and no, but what can you think we could do to solve it? And we're going to do that. And the second biggest thing is taking that information that we give you if you agree with it and advancing that forward and working around that, because it's important. Lastly, I will say this, not only at the federal level, but at every level of government, it's so important to remain vigilant and vibrant and energized. And as I see all this activism, I hope it penetrates not just at the federal level, but at every level, the state level, local level, and get involved in that respect. I think that one of the things, I was celebrating the 100th birthday anniversary stamp for the John Kennedy Museum in Hyannis just two days ago. The way he inspired people and young people to move on. We need people to get involved at every level. So those are the three things that I would suggest. So who are we? Who are we? We're Massachusetts. We're not just a Bay State, we're the Grand State. The whole country, the whole country looks at us to get up first. The American Revolution, it started here. Did we wait for South Carolina and Virginia? No, we got up first. We got up first. Massachusetts is usually right, but too soon. They ran out to Adlai Stevenson in 1952, and a voter said, "Adlai, great news. Everything he voted is with you." He said, "That's great, but I need a majority." So for all of these issues that we are talking about, we're going to need a majority, and it has to start here, like the American Revolution. The abolitionist movement, it started here. Frederick Douglass goes to New Bedford. Frederick Douglass hears about this guy William Lloyd Garrison up in Newburyport. Why don't they just get together, which they do? William Lloyd Garrison said, "With reasonable men I will reason; with humane men I will plead; but to tyrants I will show no quarter. No waste my argument." If you're going to be fighting slavery, you just have to have an attitude. You have to have an ability just to stand up and to fight. The suffragette movement, it started here. Did it happen overnight? No. The Affordable Care Act, universal health care, it started here. Did it happen overnight? Gay marriage, did it start here? Yes. Did it happen overnight? No. Yes and chooses just has to be up. We have to be up. When we're up, the rest of the country sees us on television. They see us fighting on these issues. And then that gives them the color. That gives them the sense of what they can do as well. That gives them the sense of what they can do as well. So, that's the point in history at which we are at, the Trump era. This is our generational challenge. And it is civil rights, it's women's rights, it's climate change, it's war and peace, it's rich and poor. All of these issues are on the table right now. All could be decided negatively. And that's why we have to be up. And our energy level cannot go down for these next three years and 40 weeks. We have to be there as Massachusetts leaders in every one of these issues. So, I would say that that's what makes us special, that we're the most energy-efficient state in the Union. And, and we have the highest scores of the 4th, 8th, and 10th grades in math, verbal, and science of the 50 states. And we're a separate country, we're number six, right behind Singapore. That's the most educated place on the grid. And we give hell for everyone. And we have 3.4% unemployment. We do not think we have to choose between doing all these things that are right. And while it might be controversial, in the White House, there's one other thing that we really believe in. We believe in science. Okay? It's not like religion versus science, huh? It's, science is the answer to our prayers. So, thank you for that question, but the answer is sitting in all of the seats that are out here and filled this evening. That is what must have to happen over this next year and a half. So, next question over here, Ahmad. Yep?
Good evening. I'm Carl Voges from Orleans and also from Lower Cape Indivisible. Thank you both so much for being here tonight. I want to agree with what Representative Keating said about not being the party of no. And I agree with you, Senator Markey, that this is the time to fight. And I agree with all the issues that you mentioned. But to me, there's another piece of this, which is that we also have a president whose legitimacy is questionable, whose qualifications are obviously inadequate, and who is so ethically compromised that talking about impeachment, while it might not be politically possible at the moment, makes sense. And so, I wonder if, how do you feel about what Maxine Waters is saying? How do you feel about the idea of putting that out even if it's not politically possible yet?
I think that, I think that what we need to do in order to get to the answers that we all want is to ensure that the Senate Intelligence Committee investigation of the relationship between the Trump campaign and Russia before the election and the relationship between the Trump transition team and the Russians after he won that election is all up on the table for the American people to see. And if the House Intelligence Committee can get its act together again, which is a dubious proposition, but nonetheless perhaps possible, then that could contribute. But if they're unsuccessful, then we need an independent commission to be structured like the 9/11 commission in order to get the answers for the American people. And if those answers come in in a way that is proof of a compromise of our American electoral process, then we need to appoint a special counsel to begin the official legal process of dealing with the consequences of what happened in the United States. Now, that's separate from the emoluments issue. It's separate from a whole range of other issues that are out there. But I think that it's going to be critical for us to ensure that we walk through each step correctly. So, that all the information is out there so that the entire American public understands what did happen. You might have noted yesterday, for example, that ExxonMobil asked for a waiver from the restriction on their ability to drill for oil and partner with the Russian oil company. Well, Rex Tillerson was the CEO of ExxonMobil. ExxonMobil is now asking for a waiver for the restriction. And ExxonMobil controls, get ready for this, an area the size of Wyoming inside of Russia for purposes of drilling for oil and gas. Now, what we did was we put the restrictions on in order to deal with what the Russians were doing in Ukraine, what they were doing in Crimea. And so, we can basically, and I actually asked Rex Tillerson if he would recuse himself. Because I was on the Senate Foreign Relations Committee as part of this confirmation process, and I had him come into my office. But in public, I asked him if he would recuse himself for the entire duration of his time as Secretary of State from any matter having to do with ExxonMobil. And he said that he would not, he would not do that for the entire country. So, there are many, many issues. But in so many of them, it all goes back to Russia. It all goes back to what happened during that period of time. And I think that, that, that we believe that if you can gather all the facts and put them out there, that the American people are going to come to the right conclusion. And it must be done in a way that is thorough, bipartisan. We need Republicans who are going to join with us in this investigation. And if not, independent panel has to be constructed so that we can actually see the totality of it. But in the meantime, in the meantime, as that plays out, we're going to have to fight them on every one of these issues that undermine the core values that we have been able to create as a legacy for this country on environment, on civil rights, on human rights, on labor, on education issues for generations. And that's going to be the ongoing responsibility while we wait for this investigation to be completed. Let me turn it over to you. Thank you, Ben. This administration is unique from any other administration we've had, at least in modern times, probably ever in terms of the potential for business conflicts. And that remains a very serious, ongoing issue. I was a original co-sponsor of the sanctions that were put on some of the oligarchs in Russia as a result of the intervention, illegal intervention into Crimea. Those should hold. In fact, we should be looking at strengthening those because the Minsk Agreement is being violated every day seemingly there. They continue their aggression and they continue their efforts. And that's what Russia does many times. It really causes a lot of diversions, divert attention here. But believe me, one of their primary objectives is growth. It's happened in Georgia. It continues moving fences and things through this period without getting a lot of publicity. It happens, and it happens so egregiously in Ukraine. So, these are the issues we have to look at. We have to look at the conflicts that might surround some of those issues. And one of the, Senator Markey mentioned, is do we have Exxon all of a sudden benefit from being partners with Russian oligarchs, frankly? And the oil companies there in terms of exploration of the Bering Sea, which is an amazing, really a massive area of exploitation. And if people don't believe in climate change, the Russians do. Because as the ice is melting up there, they have gone further and further in being aggressive in exploring that area and harvesting that area for oil. And they want Exxon to be a partner in that. We want to also look at the conflicts that are just so obvious. I mean, the other day, President was with President Xi and China. And then, at the same time, Ivanka, Trump was there. And the same time, she was getting approvals, business approvals, hard to get approvals, from China. What kind of image is that? And what kind of substance is that? That is, that compromises not just the appearance of our country to lead in these areas, but the substance of those things. We have never seen this before. They adopted a new, you know, in Trump, in the Trump Towers in Washington, they adopted a new diplomatic scheme, a new office. Because they know that people in other countries will feel pressured to stay there. And that's not something we want to represent the United States in terms of our own independence of decision. When we look at the, when we look at the issues in terms of the investigation of Russia, about two and a half months ago, I don't know if you read it, but I put in an op-ed in The Globe. And I am, before I was in Congress, I was a former prosecutor, former district attorney. And I know the difference between when you need a special prosecutor and when you don't. And we clearly need a special prosecutor to be dealing with this because he's been challenged. First of all, he lied in his nomination process into the Senate about his involvement with the Russians. And then, his recusal, his only limited recusal in this area. It should be clear on that. It's not a full recusal on these issues. And his deputy, no matter how independent he might appear to be, and he might actually be, you need a special prosecutor there. We need an independent commission because pretty soon we're going to be facing another election here. And there's still, one thing the intelligence people have said publicly, they will continue to get involved in our elections. And unless we realize and make the public aware, the electorate aware of just what they've done, how they do it, what we can do to cover that, we're going to face the same problems again. And it's not just the US. It's been our allies, whether it's Estonia in the Baltics, or whether it's now Germany and France. You know how involved they are in France? In France, legally, candidates can accept money from other countries. So, Russia has given $9.7 million already to Marine Le Pen's campaign. So, make no mistake about their involvement at every level. But they're involved in more than just election. They're involved in trying to divide the West. They're trying to divide the West from the US. They're trying to divide the West internally within these countries, in Germany, in France, in those countries. You already saw the effects of what they've done in Hungary. So, you're looking at what they're doing there. And their cyber efforts are very critical, not just as an arm of their propaganda, which they are the most sophisticated. But the RT, formerly Russian Television, has more viewership than any international television station in the world. And of course, General Flynn was the star of the Russian TV as well. But these are, these are issues that are important. Now, those are the fundamental issues before you get to any other issues, as difficult as it could be in a majority that would have to initiate a Petri. Getting right back to your question. But these issues have to be flushed out first. And we can't wait to deal with it. And if you just silo that within the Intelligence Committee, as I said in my op-ed, what you're going to come out with is two committees that deal with classified information. That information will never come out in full force to the public where it has to come out. And what does come out will be redacted. And who is in charge of releasing that, those redactions? The administration. So, that's why we need an independent commission. That's why the public has to be armed. We cannot combat the attack they had from a hostile country, a cyber attack. We can't do that in this instance with elections without having the electorate themselves be aware of just what they're doing. That's our strongest defense. And that's why it's important we deal with this. It's not about politics.